You know, I'm not exactly sure where is the chatroom house on that campus.
Well, that's not good. I made it so that the kids don't risk. Oh, yeah.
Okay. They got that. But then you also have to understand.
I've got my home on the down.
Academic honesty and exactness. Radical racist people can do. By the way, you're really in trouble. I have to say here, this is probably the original event. It's where down. It's 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 down. Yeah, okay. It's on both sides. It's like a bike. And the whole point of the whole creation of the power is as important as strength. Yes. All shatters where all the different parts work together. It's improved by folks that have all strength. One thing that this probably is. Yeah, genuine. Yeah, exactly. But a bit of flipping is basically a fifteen knot curry. Takes a little something. Greetings, sir. Um, well, in the midst of our Republican world, she is practically a Trump supporter. But this is a big deal. This is maybe a big spell for this eye jazzed and composition that can open us. I see it actually as a power voice behind the weak opposition. These are all engaged with their own. And so you're saying agriculture helps. The Japanese, uh, they took an entourage with them and became a terrible enemy. The great procession of imperialists. This is the thing to you in Europe. You're showing everything. No, I think.
And then back here. That column to the left. That's a little dot right there.
This is Aristotle's proof for immortality. Aristotle must be immortal because the body is unique. So it's more than this. The mind flies up into the eternal air.
I nearly had him somewhere.
Like a restless chicken falling over. No, that, that, that's true. This is Aristotle's proof for immortality. Aristotle must be immortal because the body is unique. So at some point, the mind flies up into the eternal air.
I nearly had him somewhere.
Like a restless chicken falling over. No, that, that, that's true. This is Aristotle's proof for immortality. Aristotle must be immortal because the body is unique. So at some point, the mind flies up into the eternal air.
I nearly had him somewhere.
Like a restless chicken falling over. No, that, that, that's true. This is Aristotle's proof for immortality. 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 Aristotle must be immortal because the body is unique. So at some point, the mind flies up into the eternal air.
I nearly had him somewhere.
Like a restless chicken falling over. No, that, that, that's true. This is Aristotle's proof for immortality. 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 Now, maybe it's time to make peace with ourselves. And suppose that person, Janet Crawford, is the next virgin Hollywood. How is it possible? Bro Hollywood dreams. John Hope's on our Asian president's head. He has Hollywood patients that were out there. Do you deal with that thing, that migration thing they're doing over there? Maybe it's just our building. I didn't think everybody. Never mind. An Indian girl spoke, but that's good. You have to worry about. Oh, I know. I'm so glad I woke up.
I'd like to introduce you to Mahogany Reed, if I could. Mahogany, why don't you come up and stand up here so everybody can take advantage of seeing you? Mahogany is a second-year law student at the LSU Law Center. She hails from Austin, Texas. She received her bachelor's degree in political science from LSU A&amp;M. As an undergraduate student here, she was an LSU National Scholars Award recipient, national achievement semifinalist, and a member of the National Society of Collegiate Scholars. At the LSU Law Center, she's a member of the Louisiana Law Review, the LSU moot court board, the Public Interest Law Society, and the Black Law Students Association, where she serves as secretary. She was a quarterfinalist in the Robert Lee Tullis Moot Court competition. She serves as an LSU ambassador. She finds that she has plenty of time from her law studies to get involved in community service, and so she's been involved deeply in our community. She's helped the Baton Rouge community through BREK, the Greater Baton Rouge Food Bank, volunteers in public schools, street law, the Iris Domestic Violence Center, and Relay for Life. She plans to pursue a career in commercial litigation in Baton Rouge. So it's our opportunity to hear from her.
Thank you so much, Vice Chancellor Smith, and thank you to the Board of Supervisors for having me this afternoon. I was told that I had just a few minutes to speak on my experience at the LSU Law Center, so I really just wanted to talk about a couple of aspects of the Law Center that really have impacted my future legal career and really have set me, put me in a position to succeed post-graduation. As the first and only college graduate in my family, I was a little nervous about going to law school to begin with. It was daunting, at least. But the faculty and staff at the Law Center have been nothing but supportive of everything that I've aspired to achieve at the Law Center. But for their encouragement and continued support, I would not have been put in a position that I am today to, first of all, have been selected to speak before you today and to know that post-graduation, I'll be in a pretty good position to have a pretty good legal career. And also, the Law Center fosters, does a really good job of fostering a culture of support and inclusion in and of itself. And I think this is reflected in the numerous organizations that is available to, that are available to the students at the Law Center. Everything from the Black Law Students Association to Law Review, for those who are academically inclined, to the Public Interest Law Society, for those of us who like to stay involved in the Baton Rouge community. The Law Center does a really good job of making sure that everyone who desires gets the opportunity to leave their mark on the Law Center and in the community. And so those were my brief remarks on the Law Center, and thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mahogany. Let me introduce Ben Aginyaga now. He is a third-year student at the Law Center. He's just about to graduate. He was born in Metairie and grew up in Houston, so he's a Texan, too. He completed his undergraduate work at Baylor, where he received a Bachelor of Arts, cum laude, with major in philosophy and political science, minors in mathematics and history, and distinction as a member of the honors program. At the Law Center, he's performed at the top of his class. He's received the awards for the highest grades in sixteen of his classes. Outside of class, he's been an active participant in advocacy programs, winning the Law Center's opening statement competition, the Tullis Moot Court competition, and the Chancellor's Cup Senior Appellate Challenge. He's a member of the Louisiana Law Review Board of Editors and received the Vincent and Elkins Award for the best student comment. He recently had a rare opportunity as a law student to argue a case before the Louisiana Supreme Court. The court just decided the issue in his favor. That is the favor of his client, I should say. After graduation, he will serve as the law clerk for Justice Don Willett on the Supreme Court for Texas. And then, following his term there, another judicial clerkship opportunity, this one with Judge Edith Jones on the United States Fifth Circuit Court of Appeals. He plans to pursue appellate litigation on the government side when he finishes these undertakings.
Well, thank you, Vice Chancellor Smith, and thank you to the Board for this opportunity to speak to you all. I just wanted to give you a brief glimpse of, I guess, your typical law student who comes from out of state. When I got to LSU, I had one dream, and that dream was to eventually prepare myself to argue before the Supreme Court. And I can express to you really three instances at the Law Center that made that opportunity to achieve that dream come true. The first was, my first year in law school, I was terrified my first day. One of the very first professors that I had was a former Supreme Court clerk for Justice Anthony Kennedy of the United States Supreme Court. And from day one of law school, he took me under his wing as a mentor, and to this day has provided mentorship services even though he's no longer at the LSU Law Center. The second reason that the Law Center held me was throughout my three years at the Law Center, I've had the opportunity to travel to Tampa, to Washington, D.C., to Virginia, to St. Louis as a part of the moot court traveling teams. And through these opportunities, I've actually had the chance to argue before fictional Supreme Courts. And in the process of preparing for those competitions, every single faculty member that I've had as a professor has actually sacrificed their evenings in the Law Center to grill me and my teammates as we prepare for our appointments. And the third and final event that made that dream come possible was, as Vice Chancellor Smith mentioned, three months ago, we learned that the Louisiana Supreme Court appointed the LSU Law Clinic to represent an indigent defendant before the court. And so about three days after my twenty-fifth birthday, I had the chance to go to New Orleans and argue before six justices of the Louisiana Supreme Court, who were all graduates of the LSU Law Center, as Chief Justice Johnson pointed out to me before I began. And what I took away from that is, I say all that to tell you this, that whenever you think of the Law Center, I hope that you remember people like me, people who
I'd just like to say I look forward to giving all you your well-deserved diplomas and going on and doing great things, particularly Elena Petri. This will be the second time I get a chance to sign her diploma because she was an undergraduate at Cal State Long Beach when I was president of Long Beach. So, I'm not sure if I'm following her or she's following me. She's right, but congratulations and thank you guys very much.
Thank you. Okay, please call the roll.
Mr. Plissis?
Here.
Mr. Lassane?
Here.
Mr. Yarborough? Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mr. Angel?
Yeah.
Mr. Ballard?
I'm here. Mr. Yarborough is here.
Oh, okay. Mr. Chadelain?
Here.
Mr. Crane?
Here.
Mr. Danos?
Here.
Mr. Jacobs?
Here.
Mr. Lawton?
Here.
Mr. Mallett?
Here.
Mr. McAllister?
Here.
Mr. McCrery?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Perry? You have a call.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to recognize law, LSU Law Dean and Chancellor, Chancellor Weiss, who will introduce the students, who will give the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance, and the faculty member who will address the board.
Thank you, Chairman DuPlessis. I'm Greg Smith. Chancellor Weiss had to catch a plane and ask me to sub for him, but on behalf of the Law Center, we appreciate the chance to be here to have a couple of our students make presentations and a faculty member. Ben Aginyaga is with us, and I'll say more about him and the other student and faculty member in a few moments. I understand they'll have an opportunity to speak. Ben will offer the invocation, and thereafter Mahogany Reed will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Would you bow your heads with me? Heavenly Father, we are thankful for this day, its blessings and its challenges. In this times of final stress for some of us, hard decisions, uncertain futures, we remain grateful for the opportunities that brought us here, and we remain optimistic for the great things that we can do moving forward. We therefore ask for those current students, give them motivation to excel in their work. For those students who will soon graduate, give them a sense of intellectual curiosity as they represent LSU abroad. And for this board, give the members strength, knowledge, and wisdom as they guide this university. In your name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to introduce you to Mahogany Reed, if I could. Mahogany, why don't you come up and stand up here so everybody can take advantage of seeing you? Mahogany is a second-year law student at the LSU Law Center. She hails from Austin, Texas. She received her bachelor's degree in political science from LSU A&amp;M. As an undergraduate student here, she was an LSU National Scholars Award recipient, national achievement semifinalist, and a member of the National Society of Collegiate Scholars. At the LSU Law Center, she's a member of the Louisiana Law Review, the LSU moot court board, the Public Interest Law Society, and the Black Law Students Association where she serves as secretary. She was a quarterfinalist in the Robert Lee Tullis moot court competition. She serves as an LSU ambassador. She finds that she has plenty of time from her law studies to get involved in community service, and so she's been involved deeply in our community. She's helped the Baton Rouge community through BRECK, the Greater Baton Rouge Food Bank, volunteers in public schools, street law, the Iris Domestic Violence Center, and Relay for Life. She plans to pursue a career in commercial litigation in Baton Rouge. So it's our opportunity to hear from her.
Thank you so much, Vice Chancellor Smith, and thank you to the Board of Supervisors for having me this afternoon. I was told that I had just a few minutes to speak on my experience at the LSU Law Center, so I really just wanted to talk about a couple of aspects of the Law Center that really have impacted my future legal career and really have set me and put me in a position to succeed post-graduation. As the first and only college graduate in my family, I was a little nervous about going to law school to begin with. It was daunting, to the least. But the faculty and staff at the Law Center have been nothing but supportive of everything that I've aspired to achieve at the Law Center. But for their encouragement and continued support, I would not have been put in a position that I am today to, first of all, have been selected to speak before you today, and to know that post-graduation, I'll be in a pretty good position to have a pretty good legal career. And also, the Law Center fosters, does a really good job of fostering a culture of support and inclusion in and of itself. And I think this is reflected in the numerous organizations that is available to, that are available to the students at the Law Center. Everything from the Black Law Students Association to Law Review for those who are academically inclined, to the Public Interest Law Society for those of us who like to stay involved in the Baton Rouge community. The Law Center does a really good job of making sure that everyone who desires gets the opportunity to leave their mark on the Law Center and in the community. And so, those were my brief remarks on the Law Center, and thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank you, Mahogany. Let me introduce Ben Aginyaga now. He is a third-year student at the Law Center. He's just about to graduate. He was born in Metairie and grew up in Houston, so he's a Texan, too. He completed his undergraduate work at Baylor where he received a Bachelor of Arts, cum laude, with major in philosophy and political science, minors in mathematics and history and distinction as a member of the honors program. At the Law Center, he's performed at the top of his class. He's received the awards for the highest grades in sixteen of his classes. Outside of class, he's been an active participant in advocacy programs, winning the Law Center's opening statement competition, the Tullis moot court competition, and the Chancellor's Cup Senior Appellate Challenge. He's a member of the Louisiana Law Review Board of Editors and received the Vincent and Elkins Award for the Best Student Comment. He recently had a rare opportunity as a law student to argue a case before the Louisiana Supreme Court. The court just decided the issue in his favor. That is the favor of his client, I should say. After graduation, he will serve as the law clerk for Justice Don Willett on the Supreme Court for Texas, and then, following his term there, another judicial clerkship opportunity, this one with Judge Edith Jones on the United States Fifth Circuit Court of Appeals. He plans to pursue appellate litigation on the government's side when he finishes these undertakings. So, Ben?
Well, thank you, Vice Chancellor Smith, and thank you to the board for this opportunity to speak to you all. I just wanted to give you a brief glimpse of, I guess, your typical law student who comes from out of state. When I got to LSU, I had one dream, and that dream was to eventually prepare myself to argue before the Supreme Court. And I can express to you really three instances at the Law Center that made that opportunity to achieve that dream come true. The first was, my first year in law school, I was terrified my first day. One of the very first professors that I had was a former Supreme Court clerk for Justice Anthony Kennedy of the United States Supreme Court. And from day one of law school, he took me under his wing as a mentor, and to this day has provided mentorship services even though he's no longer at the LSU Law Center. The second reason that the Law Center held me was throughout my three years at the Law Center, I've had the opportunity to travel to Tampa, to Washington, D.C., to Virginia, to St. Louis, as a part of the moot court traveling teams. And through these opportunities, I've actually had the chance to argue before fictional Supreme Courts. And in the process of preparing for those competitions, every single faculty member that I've had as a professor has actually sacrificed their evenings in the Law Center to grill me and my teammates as we prepare for our pardons. And the third and final event that made that dream come possible was, as Vice Chancellor Smith mentioned, three months ago, we learned that the Louisiana Supreme Court appointed the LSU Law Clinic to represent an indigent defendant before the court. And so, about three days after my 25th birthday, I had the chance to go to New Orleans and argue before six justices of the Louisiana Supreme Court who were all graduates of the LSU Law Center, as Chief Justice Johnson pointed out to me before I began. And what I took away from that is, I say all that to tell you this, that whenever you think of the Law Center, I hope that you remember people like me, people who came to the Law Center with a dream particularly in mind, people to whom the Law Center gave the tools necessary to achieve that dream, and ultimately, people who will be able to grasp the Law Center, being able to say, "I achieved my dream at LSU." Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ben. It's now my privilege to be able to introduce Alain Lavezour, the Herman Mois Senior Professor of Law, and Henry Ploshe Dart Professor of Law at the LSU Law Center. Alain, why don't you come forward so people can see you, too? You'll be up there for a minute or two, but that's all right. Professor Lavezour was born in Bilbao, Spain, at a time when his father served as a Council General of France. So he started off life as a Spanish-born Frenchman, but we're happy that for many years now, he has been a Louisianan. He was initially educated in European schools, but came to Louisiana to study at Tulane where he received an MCL. He taught at Tulane briefly thereafter, and then practiced law in Paris with the Mudge Rose Law Firm. After a while, an opportunity arose to work at the World Bank, and he took it. But the academic world beckoned to Alain, and he came back to Tulane to teach in the law school until, in 1977, LSU was able to persuade him to join our faculty, for which we're grateful. His areas of expertise include legal traditions, civil law systems, the civil law of obligations, comparative law of contracts, comparative aspects of EU law, international trade, sales and leases, and quasi-contracts. He's a prodigious scholar. His many books and articles are written, sometimes in English and sometimes in French, perhaps sometimes in both. He's active in a number of comparative law and scholarly organizations, including the International Academy of Comparative Law, the American Association for Comparative Study of Law, the Societe... Sorry for the pronunciation trouble here, Alain. Legislacion Comparée, the Association Henri Capitan, and the International Association of Legal Methodology. He serves on several boards, the Fondation pour le Droit Continental, and the American Journal of Comparative Law, the LSU Center for French and Francophone Studies, just to name a few. In 1998, Alain was recognized by the Université de Marseille-Paul Sétan for the Doctor of Laws Honoris Causa. And in 2010, he received a second Honoris Causa degree from the Université de Paris Ponte Onasa. He will retire from our faculty this year. He's served us many, many years, and we're grateful for his service, but he will keep busy with his many publications, and he's agreed to help us with a class or two as needed. Professor Lavezour and his wife Susan have two children and nine grandchildren, and now we have a...
Thank you, Chancellor. Thank you very much for this brief but significant opportunity to end my official career with the LSU Law Center. Starting September, I will be beginning an unofficial career since I will be teaching at the request of my very good friend, Jenny Joseph. So I'll still be on the faculty, but not in an official capacity. These thirty-eight years have been extremely exciting, demanding, at times difficult, several bumps on the road, as the bump we are going through right now and probably in the next two or three years. But overall, they have been very, very rewarding, very beneficial, I believe, to the Law Center and to myself. Teaching, researching, and writing within the confines of the Law Center would have been extremely rewarding. But I felt that having been educated abroad, received my training in civil law jurisdictions on the continent, having traveled a lot, being able to speak at least English and French, I thought my mission on behalf of the Law Center was to bring the image of the Law Center, to bring what the Law Center could offer to the civil law world, forward and as intensely as I could. I was helped in this endeavor by two organizations. One mentioned by Greg Smith, Fondation pour le Droit Continental, which is a foundation that brings together all civil law jurisdictions on the European continent. European continent meaning civil law jurisdictions. Continent on which many languages are spoken. The civil law is therefore spoken in some twenty languages on the European continent. And among those languages is, of course, Spanish, which is the language of the continent of Latin America, and Portuguese, coming from Portugal. So, I got the feeling that the Law Center was in a unique position to bring to these civil law jurisdictions, civil law countries, the knowledge, the ability to speak the civil law in English. The dawn of this basically understanding of the role that the Law Center could have came about in 2004, celebration of the bicentennial of the French Civil Code, huge monumental event in Paris. At the end of the event, some colleagues, among them Pierre Catara, asked two of us, British from Oxford, and asked me to translate his projet of the law of obligations in English. 2008, four years later, major confrontation, as of course could only happen between French and British, major confrontation in the French Senate. The comparison of the two translations could not be more revealing. The English translation was written in the English common law language. My translation, and I should say with the help of Randy Trahan, my very good colleague here at LSU, and David Gunning from Loyola, our translation was copied on the English translation of the Louisiana Civil Code of 1808, 1825, the language of the layperson. Our translation was considered to be the most relevant, the most appropriate, and the most faithful to the original text in French. And from then on, from 2008, the Law Center has been involved, through Randy Trahan and myself, in some major developments, which I hope this board will realize how important they are. Among them is, has been the translation, the official translation of the French Civil Code in English. That was done for the benefit of the French government, so if you go to the site of Legifrance, you will find English translation of the French Civil Code by David Gunning, Randy Trahan, and Alain Lavezour. The second most, I guess, important project is this one. It is a dictionary of the civil law in English. There's nothing else in the legal community that would bring to you or to anyone the civil law in English. This work was done for LexisNexis, and it was done mostly under the auspices of the Law Center. There's another project, which I think I feel very free to talk about. We're also with LexisNexis, in which the Law Center hopefully will be involved very shortly, and that is to have a really fully annotated version of the Louisiana Civil Code. All this to say that the Law Center and the state of Louisiana are now recognized as being basically flag state and flagship university of the civil law in English. There's no jurisdiction in the whole world that speaks, writes, practices the civil law in English. We are the only one. This means that we have a lot to offer to the world community because English has become the lingua franca, the language all over the world. So I would like to conclude briefly by making two remarks. First, is that one has to dispel the misunderstanding that the civil law in Louisiana is just the civil law of the state of Louisiana. Far from it. As my younger colleagues or future colleagues, Ben and Mahogany, have said, the civil law is spoken all over the world, and Louisiana civil law is only a part of the largest legal system in the world. The common law, very limited, only where one speaks English. The civil law, anywhere else, including China, Japan. The Law Center is in a unique position. It has been bestowed a wonderful gift that goes back to 1808, 1825, a gift handed over to Louisiana by a Frenchman. So I would urge the board to do everything within your power to support all endeavors carried on by the Law Center in the field of the civil law. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'd like to now ask for a motion to approve the minutes from the board meeting that was held on March 20th.
So moved.
Moved and second, all in favor. Mrs. Skinner?
I know this is always a moment of great... Staff has, in fact, reviewed the personnel recommendations and approves them and suggests the motion approved.
Mrs. Skinner has submitted his report. Are there any questions? Moved by Mr. Yarborough, second by Mr. Lassane, all in favor? Ayes, aye. Okay, now we have a report from the Council of Faculty Advisors, Mr. Evan Coe from the LSU Faculty Senate.
Thank you, Chairwoman DuPlessis, and I am, first of all, extremely pleased to see that this meeting is being streamed around the state and presumably around the nation. I know that one person at Chancellor Olia's campus down in New Orleans is at this moment viewing, perhaps not in the operating theater, but operating nevertheless, and I'm glad that we've got this new wind of transparency blowing through the monitors of sunshine. This is all to say that, of course, today we begin to feel a change in temperament. One can pick it up in this room. The atmosphere here is much better than it's been in months, years, maybe even decades. And this, of course, brings us to the second article of appreciation, that is that the faculty collectively around the state would like to express enthusiasm for the efforts that President Alexander, his various chancellors, colleagues, and his legislative delegation have made in dealing with the difficulties in the budget, and in particular, bringing the empire of reason to that very small duchy, which is the state capital. So we are delighted with the progress that you've made there. As I say, my favorite skeleton, Richard III, observes that this is the winter of our discontent, but the winter passes, and we're now in our, in the springtime of promise. And so it is that today, we can report a great range of activity by the faculty governance operation, not only at LSU, not only in the LSU, but around the state, in which, of course, the LSU system is the leader. Many events have happened over the past month, one of them, of course, being the Great Forum on the Future of Higher Education and the Budget, which included many LSU faculty members, as well as legislators, community leaders, philanthropists, et cetera, in Hammond. This drew a standing-room crowd. We also, through the hospitality and courtesy and immense personal charm of Chancellor Dan Howard, held our latest Alexandria Summit meeting just this past weekend, again with the standing-room-only crowd. There was one person standing, thirty-nine seats in the room, and one person, Apier de la Lettre. And this, of course, also marks a change because although we've been using that facility with great pleasure for a long, long time now, nevertheless, the level of courtesy, the level of enthusiasm that we detected at that campus, even among the ordinary rank-and-file employees, was impressive and was itself a bit of an inspiration. Again, I think that Chancellor Howard is doing a great job there. From that meeting, a couple of items have come forth. For example, the Louisiana Association of Faculty Senates, of which LSU is once again in the leadership position, now has its own Facebook page, the purpose of which is to begin distributing information about various motions in the world of higher education policy around the state, around the nation, and around the world. In its first day of operation, it picked up one hundred friends and is growing faster than apparently the square footage at LSU, which according to my calculation is growing at five hundred square feet per day, so we'll have another restroom cleaned before the day is out. I am happy to report that through the errors of the electorate, I have been elected to the National Council, Governing Council of the AAUP, and hope to set that erstwhile organization on a new course, not the least of which is going to be the establishment of a national database of the members of governing boards, regents, wardens, et cetera, so that we know who, to whom to address ourselves when we need action. There is a very serious matter underway just down by the river. Some of you have probably heard that a barge processing plant, which has some hazard associated with it, it's about to be constructed. We have extended to the Department of Environmental Quality an invitation to hold a town forum, a town hall or forum on the LSU campus sometime in the very near future. The resolution passed by various faculty senators around the state concerning this barge construction plant, which is going to pose one heck of a situation if it ever blows up during a football game, was also suggested by the Student Government Association, so we're hoping that that will be an enriching experience to discuss that rather dangerous prospect among the LSU community sometime soon. The faculty are, of course, as Supervisor McAllister has pointed out, somewhat underinformed with regard to the operations of the retirement plan and with regard to finances generally. So we have arranged in this past month to hold another financial wellness seminar focusing specifically on portfolio development. I don't know if any of the issues related to your various companies were specifically recommended. However, we had, again, the standing-room-only crowd, and I'm happy to report that you had never seen such a spirit of capitalism among the left-wing faculty, as was in evidence at that particular gathering. We are looking forward, over the next couple of months, to work with President Alexander on a community forum that arises from some of the controversies we've had in the last couple of months on the question of free expression, community affiliation groups, and that kind of thing. Again, I express my appreciation to the LSU system for its leadership in that area. Finally, we do always throw in a little bit of salt with the immense sweetness that we spread around. That is to note that the Faculty Senate has turned neoconservative in the sense in that it has recognized that the enemy of my enemy is my friend, to paraphrase George Bush, and it has, for the sake of one issue, joined up with the Coalition on Intercollegiate Athletics, a national faculty group that is concerned with curbing some of the excesses in big-time sports. This resolution supports the federal resolution pending in Congress at this very moment to ask President Obama to create a commission to look into some of the extravagances that we encounter in athletic programs, not always at the big-time athletic programs, because after all, at least ours is solvent, whereas the other thirty-three around the state are draining out about forty-five mil. So we are hoping that the board will also see the wisdom of supporting that congressional resolution. Finally, I'd like to give a word of praise, both to Financial and Accounting Services and to the Office of Research and Economic Development in both their A&amp;M and system-wide manifestations, for their effort in the INCURA survey. INCURA is a group that looks at the systems dealing with universities rather funded research. This is a big step forward to try to get some improvement in that operation, and I believe that both Dan Laizelle and Calzet Vosserage are due a word of praise for their initiative in bringing in those... So, it is a happy day today, and we look forward to improvement.
Thank you, Senator Coe. All right, did anybody get that? I mean, really? Okay, I don't think we have a report today from the Council of Staff Advisors. Is that correct? Thank you. So next, we'll have the President's report. Dr. Alexander?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to start by certainly recognizing our student member, Brandon Crane, and his efforts to work with the students and his commentary about our student involvement recently.
Recently, on April the fifteenth, Council of Student Body Presidents, we had a rally at the Capitol. Even though the crowd was small, we was able to fill up two committee rooms, and most of those students were able, almost all... of those students were able, almost all of those students were able to make legislation here why every campus around the state is important and why they should support us with these budget cuts. On April 30th, with the help of LSU alumni and SGA here on LSU, we had over 1,000 students on the steps loud and crying out roar and bleed purple and gold and save the LSU system. So thanks for that. And with the help from LSU alumni, we've been able to have thousands of students around the state write and call their legislations and state senators to save our schools and everything. And next week we will have elections for Council of Student Body Board.
Thank you Brandon, and we'd like to recognize Brandon at the end of this meeting, but Brandon has been a great asset for our board, but more importantly, in getting these rallies going and getting the students, it was quite, I was very impressed with what our students did. They made, they made a lot of people pay a lot of attention to us, and they took up a lot of time, and they told their stories, and nobody can tell their stories better than our students. And nobody can, everybody says they support our students, and they need, when they hear from our students, it just builds the support of all of them. And I'm very pleased to say that our students, unlike the California students that I've dealt with, didn't break any windows at the Capitol.
That's because there's a lot of state troopers there.
Thank you Brandon. Certainly our STEM students, we're going to recognize, one of our STEM students that was a presentation on the far right end, I don't have his name, but he's from Nepal. And as you know, over one-third of the entire population of Nepal impacted drastically by this earthquake, and we have 51 Nepalese students on our campus. And when our student government, as well as our administration, worked with them to get the word out, and our faculty and our faculty staff and our LSU community has more than exceeded a $10,000 support fund for them, and it's approaching, it should break 20,000 within a couple of days. So I'd like to thank the LSU community for recognizing that Nepal is, and you think, to our university, certainly with our students, our 51 students going through graduate programs, undergraduate programs, but also in the midst of their finals having to deal with this type of tragedy into their homeland. So I thank the LSU community. I'd like to call upon Mr. Mallett to introduce a number of guests that he's brought that are in support of LSU and higher education. Mr. Mallett.
Thank you King, and thank you Madam Chair for allowing me to invite these two fine men who I know personally. Mr. Ken Nakam, why don't y'all come on up? And the reason I ask for this, they've come up with a program, they're helping the schools, and I thought that the board ought to hear what our industry is doing. Mr. Weston, where you at? Come on, okay, I think you want to do it. Mr. Nakam is a graduate of LSU from Construction Management. He serves as the Chief Executive Officer of Louisiana Associate General Contractors, a statewide construction trade association headquartered in Baton Rouge, representing over 600 building, highway, heavy, utility, and industrial construction firms. His other affiliations, he's a board member of the Louisiana Construction Education Foundation, trustee of the Contractors Educational Trust Fund, serves on the advisory councils at Louisiana State University and Baton Rouge Community College. He's a treasurer of South Central Labor's Training and Apprenticeship Fund in Livonia, Louisiana, and is also the Secretary of Treasury of Louisiana Good Roads and Transportation Association. I think when he's going to present, he's probably been an intricate part, and I think you'll be impressed what he's trying to do.
Thank you Mr. Mallett.
Second gentleman, let me just introduce him, then y'all can take over. This gentleman I see frequently, he's the Vice Chair of the State Contractors Board who I serve with. Mr. Weston is also the owner of Tri-State Road Boring out of Baton Rouge, Louisiana, is a general contractor founded in 1975, forming municipal highway construction throughout the Gulf South States. Mr. Weston served on the Board of Directors for Louisiana Associate General Contractors for over 30 years, assuming the role as president in 1992, and treasurer for the last 20 years. In 2009, he was honored as a lifetime honorary member of the chapter. Other affiliations include the Contractors Educational Trust Fund, of which he is a founding member, Louisiana State Licensing Board for Contractors, which he is Vice Chairman, Construction Industry Advisory Council, among others. Mr. Weston has donated his business life to the betterment of the construction industry through his activities at AGC and CGA. As someone who serves with him on the board, he's been very intricate, in my opinion, on the position of the state contractors' progress. He's been there for a long time. I serve as chairman now, and I'm proud to say that I serve with him, but he's put his life for the construction, and today they're here to tell us that they're going to help us. Mr. Weston?
Thank you Mr. Mallett. I'm going to step in front of Mr. Nakam and sort of do a little intro about why we're here, and quite frankly, we're here to beat on our chest and say what we do. And hopefully, Madam Chairman, Mr. President, and Board Supervisors, we hope that what we do with the State Licensing Board for Contractors, what we do as an industry, we're hoping in these tough financial times for academia, that our efforts will motivate other industries. And Mr. Nakam will elaborate on that. I have spoken with, we actually have three schools of construction management in Louisiana, ULM in Monroe, Louisiana Tech in Ruston, and naturally the big boy here at LSU. We support, we the industry, support these institutions in construction management with our dollars. Mr. Nakam will go into detail, but what I can assure President Alexander, I have spoken with President Bruno at ULM, I've spoken with President Geis at Louisiana Tech, and both have asked if they could use our industry as a model to other industries to at these times to support higher ed. Particularly, we're concentrating on CM. We're very fortunate, particularly here, that we have Dean Kubek, who is a tremendous supporter of our CM program. But I think just to get down to dollars and cents, I'll let Nakam tell you about a program that we've instituted, and subsequently down the line, we may need your collective assistance. Kenny?
Thank you Mr. Weston, thank you Mr. Mallett for allowing us to come here and share what we think is a very successful story and what we've done from an industry standpoint to enhance and to invest in the future of this industry. Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Ken Nakam, CEO of Louisiana AGC. The construction industry always has supported the schools of construction management. There are three, as Mr. Weston mentioned, in the state of Louisiana that are accredited by national bodies. There is one two-year program at Baton Rouge Community College that is working on their two-year accreditation. They will, if they do so, they would be able to participate in our little game we got going on here. For years, the construction industry has recognized that we have to enhance, we have to invest, that the schools of construction turn out the future leaders of our industry. For years, we have had a licensing board that charges a fee for your licensed contractor annually, annually, every year. We left it up to a voluntary contribution, and they could list the schools that they would like to contribute to. There are 22,000 licensed contractors in the state of Louisiana. Voluntarily, some contractors would send in 50 cents, and some would send in $5,000, and they would check off what school they would like that money to be contributed to. In a good year, we may be able to present LSU with a $30,000 check, ULM a $3,000 check. It was paltry in comparison to what we need to do to enhance and invest in our industry. So in 2013, 2013, we put up the legislation that mandated, well, it increased the license fees $100 per contractor. It made it voluntary. I will say that the Licensing Board and I got very creative on how to hide the $100 fee increase from a voluntary standpoint. You do have to opt out, let me put it to you that way, you do have to opt out. And I'd like to thank all those contractors out there that just by ignorance contributed to. Sometimes ignorance is bliss.
Well now, it's being streamed live.
I'm from New Orleans, it just comes out, man. So in 2013, we did pass a legislation. The way the legislation, the mechanism of legislation is the monies that are received are split up between the three, any school that is accredited by these national bodies. Half of the money collected goes on a pro-rata share, one-third, 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 and half the money collected goes on a pro-rata share based on the number of graduates from the preceding year. To say it's been successful overnight would be an understatement. We have gone from collecting maybe in a good year, $30,000, $40,000 from the contracting community, to this year, and we are just doing our audit, so it's not official, in a neighborhood of $500,000 to be distributed up amongst the schools. So we're very excited. One day, it is our hope, one day it is our hope, that we will make this mandatory like our neighbors in Mississippi have, like our neighbors in Alabama have, like our neighbors in Florida have. They have mandatory $100 contributions that go to the schools of construction in their state. Hopefully, one year, we will get to that point also. And 22,000 licensed contractors, $100 apiece, y'all can do the math. I'll be happy to answer any questions. We're just real proud of the industry giving back to what we see is an enhancement and investment in the future of this industry.
We thank you for your realization of where construction management really starts. It starts with the students that are on the way, and we appreciate your industry, and we appreciate your efforts to get everybody around us to know that as well. And if we could get all the industries and businesses in the state to realize that we're not against business, we're not against industry in this budget, that we are a partnership and we're going to work together, this is just a great example that we can use over and over again to so many other industries in the state.
Let me add, President Alexander, that without Department Chair Chuck Berryman, who's doing a great job for LSU, we don't give this money to the departments willy-nilly. I mean, he can't go drive, buy a new Suburban with it on behalf of the department. Each school has their own industry advisory committee, made up of contractors that mostly come from that community or from those schools. And they oversee the distribution, they are very good stewards of the money that's going from the Licensing Board, because this is a direct pass, there is not one penny that goes to administration. 100% of the money that's collected goes to the Licensing Board, to these schools, the industry advisory groups are the stewards of the money, they watch how the money is spent. So it's set up pretty good.
Okay, thank you Ken.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ken, when would you anticipate passing the legislation to try to get the mandatory, so we could raise that 2.2 million?
I would love to do it next year. This year would have been a horrible year to try that. I mean, I've seen the legislature vote down a $10 fee increase to the cosmetology board that wanted to put it on themselves, so I can imagine us coming with a $100 fee increase on ourselves, that we're willing to pay ourselves. I would like to do it as early as next year.
And one of the reasons why I wanted them to come here was when they decide to do it, I thought it would be in our best interest of the school to support their endeavor, because it would raise us 2.2 million for the construction schools. Mr. Weston, have you told them about the fines situation, all the money that's generated there that goes to the schools?
Real quickly, so we don't drag it out, it seems like we're patronizing ourselves, but we have years ago instituted a fine system for unlicensed contractors, illegal contractor practices and so forth. And we were very prudent in the legislation to make sure that all fines were designated to go to education, specifically construction management. Not specifically, I take that back, we have, we have been very well to engineering schools and architecture. So all of our fine money passes through to education, to architecture, engineering, and construction management, all our fines. We were very careful not to create the proverbial Louisiana speed trap. We were not here to collect money, but the money that we did get, that fell our way, went back to education. And that program has been in effect since 1996, and I'm happy to say to you that we have distributed over four and a half million dollars to our respective schools. So that, President Alexander, is serious dollars.
That's good. Thank you Mr. Mallett for the money. Thank you gentlemen, thank you.
At a time that's badly needed, and thank you, and Ken just decided, no, on behalf of my chancellors in front of me, all administrations, not that bad, so we give it to you. Thank you again for showing how industry can work closely with us in a great partnership, and we hope to duplicate these efforts in so many other areas. Thank you again. It's a proposal, a video, a brief video on how collaboration in the energy area can be not only interdisciplinary, but interinstitutional throughout our state at LSU.
Certainly, and I think we've got a good flavor of the impact that LSU has on the state by the students that we listen to over lunch, and whether that's in the coastal environment, whether that's in healthcare, or some other field of research, we prepare students and we work with companies and industry to solve real problems. So starting about six or eight months ago, we began thinking about how do we work to solve or work with industry in the field of energy. And clearly, if there's anything that Louisiana, from a natural resource standpoint, is known for, it's all of our energy resources, but also taking those resources and producing those into final products. So whether we're in agriculture, whether we're in our geology department, our engineering, our business department, many of our faculty and students are working the field of energy. So Linda Bonin, with our communications, put together a number of vignettes of how we impact the state, and what we've done is we've linked several of these together. It's about a six-minute video that we have pushed out to many parts of the state so that they can begin understanding that LSU, yes, we teach students, yes, we have classrooms that we manage and we provide degrees, but we're much more than that as a research university in engaging with our industry. So what we thought we'd do is just show y'all a link of several of those vignettes, so you can see what we're pushing out to the population in our constituencies.
We produce a very large amount of oil and natural gas in Louisiana and along the Gulf Coast. It continues to be probably one of the second-largest unconventional fields in the United States. My name is David Dismuks, I'm a professor and the executive director at the LSU Center for Energy Studies. Louisiana industry, particularly our petrochemical industry, uses natural gas and other types of hydrocarbons, much like a baker uses flour to make certain products. They use those hydrocarbons to make a variety of different products that range from the synthetics in your carpet to tires. Louisiana and the energy industry are very integrated and certainly very important to the broader US economy. Things in solar and wind and other traditional types of renewable energy projects, but we're also focusing our activities on things that are unique to Louisiana, such as geopressure geothermal opportunities, which look at heating sources that are under the ground. The Center for Energy Studies at LSU is an interdisciplinary unit. We have a variety of different personnel in our unit that range from geography to geology to economics, and we focus on looking at issues that affect the citizens, the environment, and the economy of Louisiana. One of the things that I would argue that we're very good at at LSU is solving applied problems, and really taking our traditional strengths and experiences and leveraging those into the next generation of technologies and ideas. It's one that has a resource that is here in Louisiana that our industry can pull upon, as well as one that can make a big contribution to the energy needs of the United States.
EPIK is an acronym for Enabling Process Innovation Through Computation. Our focus is on introducing new process ideas. How can we use advanced computer simulations to understand what are the processes and how we can make them better, so that they become less environmentally threatening and more energy efficient? The idea of EPIK actually came about when we were discussing a few of our colleagues, how can we create a framework to introduce innovation in a more systematic manner? We each bring different strengths, and so we said if we work together, we can have an impact. The way that we are taking fossil fuels and burning it up and putting it into atmosphere, if we don't do it over the long run, this cannot be sustained. Louisiana is a great place for renewable resource development, because we have a lot of sun and a lot of water. The secret to learning is actually to teach. My passion about teaching and my passion about fluid mechanics, now EPIK has become my passion. I look at it as an opportunity for building an institute for process innovation on LSU campus, and I'm hoping that it will draw people from all over the world one day.
We are beneficiaries of one of the great discoveries in our lifetime, and that is the discovery and development of natural gas and associated energy. My name is Jerry Spivey, I'm a professor of chemical engineering at LSU. I'm also director of the Center for Atomic Level Catalyst Design. My research focuses on development of catalysts for conversion of resources like biomass, natural gas, or coal into clean fuels and energy. Catalysts are essential to virtually every process that involves fuels, chemicals, or intermediates. So a catalyst simply makes a reaction take faster. In our center, we're focused around three areas: computation, synthesis, and characterization of catalysts. of catalysts. The capabilities of those three areas are not exactly ones that are directly enmeshed. One of the reasons that we carry out the research in a center is to allow people to interact and share their ideas. Those processes are more efficient, they make less waste. Energy permeates everything. Particularly interested in how catalysts can be used to convert those resources, whether it's biomass, coal, or natural gas, into clean fuels. Catalysts are an essential part of that process, and I want to help develop ways of doing that better.
In Louisiana, we have about twelve and a half billion barrels of oil trapped right under our feet. And the currently-used enhanced oil recovery processes can get you about five to ten percent of that oil. So we said, that's too low. And that's why we wanted to develop a process that does better than five to ten percent. That's how gas-assisted gravity drainage process was developed here. We are at a stage where we can say that the gas-assisted gravity drainage process can get you anywhere from sixty-five to eighty-five percent of that oil left behind. So there is a big gap between what was expected and how it has performed in the field. So we wanted to improve that performance. Water alternating gas process, WAG for short, we are doing a horizontal flood using gas and water, one behind the other. Gas wants to go up, we say, no, you can't go there, we'll inject heavier fluid behind you, which is water. Water wants to go down, oh, no, 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 you can't go there, we'll put gas behind you, lighter fluid. So we are really fighting with nature every step of the way in WAG. So we wanted to develop something that works with nature. And GAGD, which is gas-assisted gravity drainage, you're saving seventy-five percent of the raw material cost. That is a tremendous benefit on the profit side.
My name is John Russon. I am vice chancellor for the LSU Agricultural Center. We're all working together to identify long-term solutions to our nation's and our world's energy challenges. Behind me, as you see, a number of different mature sugarcane plants. They may look like tall grass to you, but they represent tremendous value both currently and potentially to Louisiana. The LSU Ag Center Sustainable Bioproductions Initiative is a five-year program funded by the USDA, looking at the potential for production of biomass crops unique to the southern United States. And our task has been to develop production strategies, logistic strategies, processing strategies, to investigate the potential for those industries in the southern United States.
The energy industry is probably the single most important industry for the economy. My name is Keith Hall. I'm director of the Mineral Law Institute and the Campanile's charity, as professor of energy law at LSU Law School. Every day in the news, there are issues relating to not only how that affects the economy and jobs, but also how it affects the environment. And our graduates are to be prepared to be the leaders in all those fields. The interdisciplinary approach is key as you rise in your field. Here at the Labor Energy Center, we're convinced that the future leaders of industry and public policy are going to need to understand law, engineering, science, economics that relate to energy. But mineral law is obviously a key part of the energy law equation. More than our country's energy comes from oil and gas, and mineral law in Louisiana is basically oil and gas. So the mineral law program and the Mineral Law Institute are a key component of the Labor Energy Center. That background also grounds me in making sure that I'm looking at the theory in a sense of why it's important to the real world. And I think that's going to serve our students well and serve the industry that we work with, LSU, your partner for energy research.
Provost Bell?
One other item that I wanted to mention to you all, and that has to do with recruiting of students, and certainly we've got a great group of students that are looking and wanting to come to LSU, and we're working on yield, that is, how many of those will be able to track and make sure they're here in the fall. But something, kind of a nuance of that is diversity. There's over a hundred and five historically black colleges and universities in the United States. And this past fall, fall of two thousand and fourteen, LSU enrolled more African-American students than two-thirds of the HBCUs in the United States. And that is House, Spellman, Tuskegee. And that's right, we enroll more African-American students than Xavier, than Dillard, and SUNO as well. So while we talk about overall numbers, we're being successful, we're also successful if we drill down and look at diversity, if we look at diversity from our gender standpoint as well, ethnicity. Our group has worked very hard, and so there's some good things going on here. Thank you, President.
Thank you, Provost Bell. That's a great, great result. And I'll give some others along those lines. But first, Provost Bell may have to step out, he's got a flight to catch. His daughter is graduating from Chapel Hill tomorrow. And his son is graduating next Saturday from Kansas. So if you need a loan from anybody next year...
That's right.
He has two less out-of-state payments to make. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Stuart. Graduation next week. Just one of the reasons, because in the midst of all these budget battles in the last couple of months that we've been addressing these issues, the early numbers, we'll have more on the money numbers, but this is because finals are still going on and we may lose one or two between now and then. But we certainly hope that's not the case. But we've got some records to report. At the Medical Center, Health Sciences Center in New Orleans, nearly nine hundred graduates, which is indeed a record, nearly seven hundred graduates, medical M.D.s, Ph.D.s, and dentistry, which indeed is, is a record for our medical center in New Orleans. Medical Center in Shreveport will have another two hundred and seventy graduates walking. LSU A, the largest graduate class in their eight-year history at two thousand, two hundred and fifteen. LSU E, almost two hundred graduates will be walking a week from Saturday. LSU S, three hundred and forty-two graduates that'll be walking. This is indeed a great, 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 I think, opportunity for us to make sure that everybody knows why we're here. The flagship institution, I would say even in this case, graduating class in history with four thousand one hundred and eleven graduates. That's also the largest African-American graduating class by over seventy students, the largest Hispanic graduating class in our history by over thirty students, the largest female graduating class, largest baccalaureate degree graduating class, the largest master's graduating class, and the largest Hawaiian Pacific Islanders graduating class. And we go from two to four in that category. But it's, it's really a remarkable achievement in the midst of what we've been through, that we are seeing our students graduate and staying true to their goals, and our faculty and staff are working diligently, even with less people, to ensure that these goals are met at a time in, in American history when it's never been more important for them to graduate from, from our institution and other institutions throughout the world. Dr. Opelka, you have some updates, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. You should have in your packet two handouts. One, which is, was presented over at the House on, in the state Capitol, from our public-private partner in New Orleans, the LCMC Health.
That came from our local partner here. I gave them the challenge of could we represent everything we've done on one page? And they met my challenge. And they presented that again for your review. And it again shows significant savings to the state in this relationship. Significant cost reductions per patient day, an enormous increase in our graduate medical education, and the care provided has increased in some instances many fold. Urgent care being an increase of 212 percent. But in almost every benchmark you can see, there's an extraordinary increase in care being provided to the community from our local partner. This is repeated again and again in the partnerships throughout the state. It's lost in all the politics to the moment. But if everyone remembered back, the FMAP reductions we were faced with, bringing these hospitals down to ten beds and hardly functioning clinics, in this state that you see before you of modern management systems, extraordinary savings, and savings in the use of state general funds in establishing more care, I would call this a huge success that people don't quite recognize for other given reasons that they have. So those are the two highlights I want to make on the partnerships. And I want to go into a very brief presentation on our tech transfer project that I mentioned to you in the past. But before I do, I would stop, Mr. President, and ask if there are any questions related to the partnerships.
Questions on our partnerships.
Okay. Let me move very quickly to this tech transfer. They're bringing me the controls. That's dangerous. I mentioned this before to you. You should also have this in a handout in front of you. And I realize it may be too small to project up above, but the bottom line is we've transitioned healthcare in this country to electronic health records. The federal government has invested $36 billion to do this in every hospital and in every physician's office in the country. It's penetrated significantly. However, universally, these EHRs were designed for all clinicians, but they work for none. If you go out and talk to the physician in practice today, there's probably no greater headache than the electronic health record. It slows them down. It takes them out of their workflow. They're staring at the computer and not talking to the patient anymore because they have all these obligations. So when you look at it, what does it mean in short story? A clinician usually has 12 minutes to see a patient, be empathic, document the visit, sufficient granularity to justify billing code, achieve up to 140 quality metrics, never --
Louisiana House of Representatives voted to advance several measures designed to provide critical revenue to the state of Louisiana to help restore funding to LSU and its sister institutions of public higher education and to health care. Whereas the General Appropriations Bill, House Bill One, which funds governmental operations for the 2015-2016 fiscal year, will soon be considered by the House Appropriations Committee, and several measures will now be considered by the Louisiana Senate. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the LSU Board of Supervisors commends and sincerely thanks the Louisiana House of Representatives for their efforts to prioritize higher education. Be it further resolved that the LSU Board of Supervisors respectfully urges full restoration of funding for higher education in House Bill One throughout the legislative process. Be it further resolved that the LSU Board of Supervisors respectfully requests the Louisiana Senate favorably consider supporting efforts initiated by the House of Representatives that can support the restoration of funding for higher education in Louisiana. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be provided to the Louisiana Legislature.
Thank you, Mr. Lassane. The resolution has been read. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Yarborough. Any opposition? Seeing no opposition, the resolution has been adopted. Okay. Next supervisors, I'd like to call your attention to the reports that are part of the agenda and ask if there aren't any questions. I'd like to accept a motion to accept the reports.
Amen.
By Mr. Chatelain, seconded by Mr. R. Ballard. All in favor?
-- degrees for consideration.
That was the hardest part of this, I think. LSU A&amp;M is recommending that the Board of Supervisors recognize three outstanding individuals who have made significant and enduring contributions to LSU, the state and nation, by awarding each of these individuals the Doctor Humane Letters. Ms. Mary Manheim, nominated by the Department Chair in Geography and Anthropology, received a Bachelor of Arts and a Master of Arts from LSU, and is currently the professional in residence at LSU. Ms. Manheim serves as the Director of LSU Forensic Anthropology Computer Enhancement Services, commonly known as Spaces Laboratory. In 2006, Ms. Manheim initiated a bill which ultimately became a law to create comprehensive database for all unidentified and missing persons within Louisiana. She now serves as the Director for the Louisiana Repository for Unidentified and Missing Persons Information Program, which houses the most comprehensive state database of its kind in the U.S. and has been successfully used to solve cold cases both locally and from across the country. Through LSU Press, she has published three nonfiction books and one book of fiction based on her work. Added to these is a new nonfiction book due out in spring 2016 on the endangered historic cemeteries of Louisiana's coastal regions. Ms. Manheim has been a recipient of various teaching awards throughout her years at LSU and served as thesis advisor for over 60 master's degree students. She is retiring this semester. Ms. Manheim is deserving of the honorary degree. Mr. James Jimmy Moran, nominated by Dean Richard Kubak, earned a Bachelor of Science degree in aerospace engineering from LSU. He received a Master of Business Administration and Finance from Tulane University and began his career as a CPA in New Orleans. Mr. Moran's extensive civic engagement activities include working with LSU Foundation, the LSU Tiger Athletic Foundation, and the LSU College of Business Dean's Advisory Committee. Mr. Moran is committed to and compassionate about advancing LSU. He served as a member of the TAF Board of Directors and was co-chairman of the Tiger Stadium Expansion Committee. He has served as co-chairman of the LSU Business Schools Building Oversight Committee and is a member of the TAF Advisory Board. Mr. Moran is deserving of the honorary degree. Mr. Roger Ogden, nominated by Dean Richard White, is currently a real estate developer, civic leader, and philanthropist. He received a Bachelor degree with honors from LSU College of Business and a Juris Doctorate degree from Tulane University Law School. Mr. Ogden has served on many councils and advisory committees at LSU. He is a former member and chair of the LSU Board of Supervisors and has served on the College of Business's Dean Advisory Board, the LSU Business Building Oversight Committee, and served all of the critical leadership roles to advance LSU. Mr. Ogden was one of the eight dedicated supporters of the E.J. Orso College of Business who spearheaded the fundraising, design, and construction of the business education complex, which has since been named one of the top 10 most beautiful business schools worldwide. In December 2014, he made a transformational unrestricted gift to Honors College, which will provide funding for generations of students to come. This gift puts LSU's new Roger Hadfield Ogden Honors College among the most elite in the country. Mr. Ogden is deserving of the honorary doctorate. It is recommended that the LSU Board of Supervisors adopt the resolutions to approve the request to award the Doctor of Humane Letters to Ms. Mary Manheim, Mr. James Moran, and Mr. Roger Ogden. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have a recommendation to approve the three noted honorary degrees. Do I have a motion?
I'm moved.
Moved by Mr. Yarborough, and second by Mr. Move by Mr. Yarborough, and second by Mr. Moore. I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
They will all be present at the event upon this approval. They've agreed to join us at the Thursday, main commencement event, Thursday evening at the PMAC.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will, I think in your packet you see the proposed 2015-16 Board of Supervisors meeting schedule. So I ask for a motion to approve the schedule. Motion by Mr. Mallett, seconded by Ms. Crane. All in favor? Ayes have it. My report will say thank you to one of our very wonderful Board of Supervisor members. Before we adjourn, I wanted, like I said, take a moment to recognize and congratulate our student board member, Brandon Crane. This is his last meeting as a student board member, and we want to memorialize his great service on the board this past year. Brandon, I know I speak for all of our Board of Supervisors in thanking you for your steadfast commitment to LSU and for being an active and dedicated member of this board. You've been a great voice for the students, and you've served as an inspiration for all of us and the students to come after you to this board. So with that, we would love to, I'd like to ask Mr. Yarborough and Mr. Lassane to walk with me to present you with a resolution on your service.
Is that my biggest supporter over there?
You're the man.
Brandon may be one of the few that started at LSU-E, got his baccalaureate at LSU-A, and be headed to graduate school at A&amp;M. So he's worked his way through the pipeline probably better than anybody has.
And I'd like to read the resolution, if I may. Whereas, Mr. Brandon Crane, Student Body President at Louisiana State University of Alexandria, was elected by the LSU Council of Student Body Presidents as a student member of the Board of Supervisors of Louisiana State University and Agricultural and Mechanical College for the 2014-2015 academic year. And whereas, Mr. Crane has served as an outstanding supervisor representing the student voice and perspectives on matters for board consideration. And whereas, Mr. Crane has been an ardent, punctual, and engaged member of the board at all board meetings, functions, and events. And whereas, Mr. Crane has served with distinction as the Chair of the LSU Council of Student Body Presidents, providing leadership on behalf of every LSU campus, including meeting with Louisiana's congressional delegation in Washington, D.C., and the Louisiana Legislature to advocate on behalf of student interests. And whereas his numerous contributions, personal and educational achievements, and an unparalleled commitment to the advancement of LSU has earned Mr. Crane the respect and admiration of his colleagues on this board. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Louisiana State University and Agricultural and Mechanical College commends Mr. Brandon Crane for his service on this board and wishes him great success in future endeavors. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be presented to Mr. Crane as an expression of gratitude and that this resolution be entered into the permanent record of the Board of Supervisors. Congratulations. Thank you very much. The audit committee will not meet, is that correct, Mr. Jacobs? The audit committee will not meet?
No audit.
Okay, no audit committee. With that, I just want to remind members that the next meeting is scheduled for June 19th in Alexandria. Blake, we're expecting crawfish. And beer. It's a lot of crawfish. With that, I have a motion to adjourn by Mr. Ballard, seconded by Mr. Yarborough. All in favor? Ayes have it. Have a good afternoon, everybody.
Thank you, Howard.